As Chair of the Northampton School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor, as a result of COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which is authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Northampton School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. The public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: (646) 876-9923 and webinar ID 95030545769. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. You previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing this meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of SAU21@www.sau21.org. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there's a problem with access. If anyone has a problem, please call (603) 926-8992, extension 114. D) Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes will be taken during this meeting. They shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their present, please also state whether anyone is in the room with you during this meeting, which is required by the right to know law. We will now take a roll call.
Cindy Burke?
Cindy Burke here. Nobody is in the room with me.
Greg Duffy?
Present and alone.
Martin Tavishian?
Present and alone.
Nermina Peterson?
Present and alone till 7:00.
Thomas Von Jess?
Present. Mary Ann Von Jess is in the room currently.
Roll call taken.
Okay, thank you very much. We will start the meeting following our agenda. Moving on to number two, questions and comments from those in attendance. If there are any questions or comments from those in attendance, you can please access the Zoom meeting. And I believe raising your hand in the... I should probably check again. It looks like there's about five attendees out there. So if you raise your hand using your Zoom function, then Deborah will be able to see that and invite you to speak. All right. Nothing, Deb? Okay. We will continue to move on then. Section three, approval of the minutes. We have our December 3 regular minutes. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 3, 2020 meeting.
Any further discussion? Comments? Corrections? Okay.
Cindy Burke? Approved. Greg Duffy?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
Thomas Von Jess?
Abstain.
Okay. Vote taken.
You got it. Okay, next, correspondence and commendations. Do we have any correspondences and commendations? Sue?
I do. I have a few. And I wanted to... They're commendations. I wanted to thank Marcia Zaviz and Mary Oliver for their work on the Virtual Talent Show. You'll hear a little bit more about that later on, but they did an amazing job continuing a Northampton school tradition in this environment and put together just a really cool mix of student talent and teacher talent. And it was just very entertaining and we were able to share it with families before the holiday. So hopefully, people had a chance to see that. I also wanted to commend all of the teachers and all of the staff at Northampton School for just kind of pulling together and getting things ready for some changes next week. And most particularly, our custodians who, despite some challenges and odds against them, were able to move a lot of furniture around and do a really thorough, deep cleaning in the classrooms and in the school over the break. And then the last commendation I have is for our two administrators, Becca and Ayesha, and our middle school team. We had a parent information meeting on Tuesday night to talk about some of the middle school changes, and it was really well attended. And special thanks go to the whole middle school teaching team who all attended. It's not a mandatory, you know, thing for teachers to attend, but Andre Garner, Elliot Pope, Rebecca Jones, Dana Babiac, Drew Zaliga, Trish Johnston, Chris LaCroix, Denise Pazdin, and Erin Preston all attended and gave input and I think really helped families feel comfortable and supported. And I know as an administrator, I felt very supported by that team. And Dr. Eric Carleian was also there with us. And so I thank her for her attendance and participation in that meeting. That's it.
Thank you, Sue. Any other commendations? Nope. Okay, moving on to our student representative report. How are you doing, Kayla?
I'm good, thanks. This night I did both of the things I'm going to be discussing. So now you guys know what I'm talking about. So hello, Happy New Years. Ahead of this month's presentation, I interviewed Mrs. Zaviz, one of the art teachers at NHS over Zoom. We talked about the School Talent Show, which was released as a YouTube video last week. The Talent Show usually happens every late fall at NHS. Students will prepare their acts, either get up on the Northampton or when it cut at stage, and perform for an audience. Many students look forward to it, and so do the eighth graders. This year, 10 eighth graders were emcees in the Virtual Talent Show. They introduced all of the acts and came up with fun little skits to add to the movie. It was great for the younger students at NHS to see some of the older kids participate in this community project. This year's Virtual Talent Show had several benefits and challenges. One challenge was that it took Mrs. Zaviz a long time to make the movie. However, one of the benefits was that way more students participated than usual. Typically, it can be nerve wracking to get up on stage and perform in front of an audience. When kids were told that all they had to do was submit a video, there was much greater turnout. Anyone in grades K through 8 could participate, and the Talent Show movie ended up being an hour and a half long. Luckily, it was easy for families to skip through and find their students. Also, another benefit was that usually, the acts that students perform have to be doable on a stage. This year, there were all kinds of cool and crazy acts in home and outdoor settings. One student even filmed himself doing backflips and other crazy stunts on a trampoline. Next, I would like to thank a couple of people for making the Talent Show happen. Thank you for all of the teachers and staff who participated in the movie. Thank you to Mrs. Oliver for organizing the show and getting all of the information out to students. And a huge thank you to Mrs. Zaviz, who spent a long time editing the Talent Show movie. And for those of you who do not yet see the Talent Show, it is worth watching and especially worth seeing Mrs. Zaviz's beautiful and heartfelt song. We are lucky to have her in our NHS community. As you know, all of the middle schoolers are going into school for one in-person day each next week. I speak honestly when I say that while we are excited, we are also a bit nervous because many of us have not been in the building for almost a year now. The elementary students, faculty, and staff all know what in-person learning during this COVID-19 time period is like, but the middle schoolers have no idea. Usually, the first day of school gives kids a little bit of anxiety, but mostly excitement. This year, we are already halfway through the year, and the majority of us middle schoolers have not been in the building at all. The anxiety about our first week of school on the new schedule is completely different. Students are asking themselves questions like, "What will my schedule consist of? Will I be in a classroom with my friends? Do I even remember what the in-person, everyday school norms are like? Will I have the courage to raise my hand?" I know that we are all nervous to head back, but I hope that we will all enjoy being in the building with our teachers and peers. I know I will look forward to seeing my teachers and classmates face to face. The middle schoolers all appreciate the effort it has taken to plan these changes. Thank you to our teachers and the administration for bringing us back into the school safely. I hope that you all had a wonderful holiday break. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Does anyone have any questions? It looks like Tom has a question.
Well, I don't have a question. I've got a comment. Kayla, thank you for your thoughtful comments and your preparation. You did a lot of work to get ready for this. It's clear that you're not only thoughtful and appreciative, but you're very inclusive in the comments, both about students and teachers, and I want to recognize that. And I also want to applaud you for being honest about your candor, about being anxious and nervous about coming back to school. It's going to be good. You've got great teachers. You've got great administration, and they're going to take care of you, and they're going to make it as easy as possible. So thank you for your work. And thank you for recognizing Mrs. Zaviz. We're really lucky to have her.
Thank you so much. Definitely.
Any other questions or comments for Kayla?
Yeah, if you guys haven't had the chance to watch the video, it's well worth it. My son chose not to do participate, but I watched it, and it's amazing, the whole thing. Mr. Zaliga did a great job. Zaviz did an awesome job. The kids are funny, talented, they're works. But Kayla, I appreciate the understanding of a little bit of an anxiety, talking to my son, who's going back into sixth grade. This is, I think, the first time in his life where he says, "I want Friday and a Monday. Let's just skip the weekend. I want to go to school." And yet, not even sure that he knows, he says, "I don't even know what the building looks like anymore. It's been so long." But excited, a little nervous, and hopefully, it'll be great to get you guys back in, and we'll continue to work and hopefully get you in more.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Kayla? All right, thank you, Kayla, for taking the time. Again, you're certainly welcome to hang out and enjoy the meeting. We've got a second read in our policies and, of course, the financial report. Those are two very, very exciting things. But I understand if you've got some homework you want to sign off, feel free to do that as well.
Thank you. Have a nice night, everyone.
Thank you.
Sorry, Matt. I tried to entice her with the financial report, but she didn't go for it. All right, moving on to education updates. School council. Sue, do we have an update?
Well, yes and no. So school council did not meet in December, so we don't have an official update. We're meeting next week. So we'll be discussing things. The agenda's not even fully set, but there are some items related to communication and parent conferences and things like that that will be on our agenda for next week.
All right. Sounds good. Any questions for Sue on the school council update, the brief school council update? Okay, moving on to continuing business. We have a second read on our policies.
Everyone? Oops, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to make a motion to approve the second read and adoption of the 21 policies, presented along with the withdrawal of the four policies listed. GBAA sexual harassment, GBAA sexual harassment for students, GBAHIV/AIDS, and JLCA-CCAHIV/AIDS, because they're being replaced with updated policies.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any comments, questions, or addendums to the policies? Assuming that if there were any, they were forwarded on to the SAU. Cindy? Did you raise your hand?
Yeah, there's two things that I had a question about. One was in the policy K. It's just a little confusing to me that we talk about the proper channeling of complaints goes teacher, principal, superintendent, and board of ed. And then in the first paragraph, it says, "In the event that a complaint is made, the board member should refer the complaint to the superintendent." That seems counter to what you say in the beginning, so it was just a little confusing to me.
Can you tell me which?
Public Complaints, is that the one, Cindy?
It's Public Complaints, section K, code KE.
Yeah.
Title Public Complaints. So in the very beginning, you go that our belief is you go to the teacher, then the principal, then the superintendent, then the board of ed. And then down in the bullet point, in the numerical points, it says, "The board member shall refer to the superintendent." So it seems like that's a different order than what you say in the top of the policy.
Yeah, so that's a great question, Cindy. I appreciate that. So the intent here is that if there's a complaint, it should go first the teacher, then the principal, then the superintendent, and then the board of education. However, if somebody supersedes that and brings the complaint directly to a board member, then the board member shall bring that directly to the superintendent.
Okay, so we wouldn't go, "Oh, you need to go talk to the principal about it."
Correct. It's saying that if someone comes to us with a complaint, and hopefully, they don't. Hopefully, they go to the teacher, the principal, superintendent, board of ed. But if they bring it directly to us, then our responsibility is to bring it to the superintendent so the superintendent can handle it.
Okay.
That's a good question.
And then one more question about the policy JLCG, the exclusion of students who present a hazard. Who determines that they are hazardous? I don't think it's outlined in there very clearly. And I just want to make sure that not anybody can say this student is hazardous and therefore needs to go home.
I can speak to that if you like.
Yes, please.
So for this one, the hazard would be a health issue. So this is a contagious or communicable illness, or is otherwise a hazard to him or herself or others. So this would be something that we would look to the nurses to be identifying. If a student has... Although, it could come to us in several ways. It could come to us during the day, and the student goes to the nurse, and the nurse may not necessarily be diagnosing the student. However, this gives them the leeway to do so. If a student is, you know, if a parent lets us know that a student has a communicable illness, then this policy gives us the right to exclude a student who presents a hazard to other students. So I think it's less likely that it would be our staff actually determining the actual illness. This is just giving us the allowance to exclude the student if they're going to be a hazard to other kids in the building.
I guess, do we have any concerns that a teacher, if a child is sneezing or something, a teacher decides, you know, "You need to go home"? Would that be acceptable?
Well, it would have to be by the approval of the superintendent.
Okay.
So that's something that, yeah, we would... It wouldn't be just anyone excluding a student, for sure.
Right, which was included in the policy, the superintendent part.
All right, great. Those are my only questions.
Okay. All right, so we have a first and a second. That's further... Any further discussions? I think we would be ready for a vote then, Deb.
Cindy Burke?
Yes.
Greg Duffy?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
And Thomas Von Jess?
Yes.
Vote taken.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on with continuing business. Update on our return to school. That is either going to come from Sue or Caroline.
So Susan and Becca have quite a lot to share with you. I'll turn it over to them. But I want to add first that they've done an incredible job putting this together for you, the data and information as far as where the students are, what their, you know, of course, the plan for next week and beyond. So I just want to echo the kudos to them and to the middle school staff who've worked so hard in preparation. So I'll turn it over to Susan and Becca and Ayesha.
Thank you. So am I a co-host or no? Can I be a co-host? So I can share my screen?
I think she's working on it.
You're on mute, Deborah.
Dude, you have a PowerPoint you're going to share? I don't see it in the board docs. Was it not included?
The PowerPoint? No, it wasn't in board docs.
My computer is running slow for some reason, so I'm like right there clicking it, but it's not going anywhere. Make co-host. There you go. Okay, you should be good to go.
Okay, thank you. So this is an update on our instructional models for the board meeting today. So we wanted to just start off by framing, you know, the challenges that we have. And I know most of you know much of what they are, but I think, you know, just for anyone in the community that's listening too, is, you know, this is, it feels like there's frustration, you know, about why some grades are in school and some grades aren't in school. And, you know, honestly, there are some factors that, due to our size and due to our staffing levels, that are just a big challenge. And, you know, we kind of, we're talking and thinking about the analogy with Goldilocks, you know, like the just right-sized school. So some schools that are larger have enough teams in their middle school that they can dedicate a whole remote team for the students who want to remain remote. And then some of the smaller schools just have so many fewer kids that class size isn't an issue. So typically, like under normal circumstances, I feel like Northampton School is like just right. But under these pandemic circumstances, we're faced with some challenges that have been hard for us to solve, and so we've been really working. We haven't been just sitting thinking that everything's fine the way it is. We've really been trying to problem solve and work to figure out the best ways to move forward. One of the other challenges is that the elementary grades have an SAU Remote Academy to send the kids who want to stay fully remote to, and we don't have that opportunity in the middle school grade. So we're charged with providing the remote instruction and the in-person instruction. So we really are excited about welcoming our middle schoolers back. We have thought long and hard about how to allocate our resources. So, you know, as you know, next week, we're starting the one-day plan, having middle schoolers back one day a week. We're like, we'd like to use the month of January to assess how it's going and ultimately increase from one day a week to two days a week as soon as we're able to. So, which would be more of like a typical hybrid model. In the younger, in the pre-K to five grades, we ended up not having any students return from RLA. Initially, with the initial survey, we had interest in students coming back. And then I believe, at least it's my understanding, that with the spike in cases, some of the families that had indicated they'd like to come back from RLA in person, rethought that decision and elected to stay in RLA for another trimester. So we currently anticipate that we have some preschoolers returning because the preschool has been running their own RLA. And we have a couple of preschoolers that have joined back, but we haven't had any impact to our class size in trimester two as a result of the change. We do recommend doing another survey to find out who is interested in coming back for the third trimester and to continue with our current schedule. So Becca, I think, is up for this slide, correct?
Yep, I'm going to share some information about the middle schools in the next.
Just real quick, do you want us to save all our questions to the end, or do you want us to hit it as you're going through?
It'd be helpful at the end, thank you, just in case something's coming up on a slide, and that way I won't trip over myself. Thank you, because otherwise I will. So the first two slides that I'm going to discuss are really just talking about the finalizing of the plans that we shared last time that we presented. So this is our plans for next week and moving forward until our next decision-making place for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So sixth grade, we are teaching in four groups. The three groups will be our in-person groups, composing of students' sizes of 11, 11, and 10 for those class sizes. We also have a group of nine that are staying completely remote. They're going to be in the buildings on Monday and Tuesday. So Groups 1 and 2 will be in-person on Monday. Groups 3 and 4 will be in-person. Well, what, 3 will be in-person on Tuesday, and Group 4 will receive direct instruction remotely on Tuesday. And the days that students will not be receiving their in-person instruction when the other group is in the building, we will have, basically, we're calling it a modified asynchronous day that's going to have support from faculty, but not necessarily the direct instruction that our students have become accustomed to. Well, they will not be receiving the direct instruction that we've had in the enriched virtual learning. For grade seven, they're going to be in three groups because it is a smaller class. There's going to be two groups of 10 and 11, and then we have a small group of four who's going to be receiving remote instruction. They're going to be in the buildings on Wednesday, and they're going to follow a different remote schedule on the Fridays when our eighth graders are in the building. Their math class can still be synchronous, but they're going to have supported asynchronous learning for their other four classes. And of course, their UA will continue to be synchronous as it is now. We did modify the UA schedule for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade as needed so that those Zoomed UAs for the in-person days would make the most sense for those days of the week. And here you can see for eighth grade, the eighth grade, again, because it's a larger group, we're going to have in four groups. We have three groups in-person, Groups of 9, 9, and 10. And then our largest group is actually our class, a group that's decided to stay entirely remote. Our eighth graders will be in the building on Fridays, and on Wednesdays, they're going to have a synchronous math class, a synchronous UA. And then they're going to have a synchronous core class, but it's going to be one large class. So it's not going to be exactly the same as it is in our virtual, enriched virtual learning days that they're accustomed to now, but they will have some direct instruction, even though it's in a much larger group, from their teachers. And then, as I mentioned, we have made UA changes so that the schedule, that the UA being Zoomed is best for that particular delivery of instruction. And so considering our options for increasing our in-person time, we are using the month of January to gather data. So we need to figure out not only the impacts of bringing more students into the building as a system, thinking about safety and the buses and all of the details that come with that, but also thinking how it's impacting our students' learning, how the students are experiencing this. And so we're looking forward to learning a lot in the month of January and making adjustments as we see fit, as well as, of course, monitoring the situation in our communities with COVID cases. So our hope is by mid-February to bring the middle school students back two days a week. And of course, the things that we'll be considering are those things that will be assessed, as I mentioned, that we'll be assessing in the month of January. So this is an example of what the next schedule could look like, what we're considering for the two days a week. Not really sure where those white boxes, the enriched virtual learning, that's one of the things that we need to consider. Is it better to have those all on the same day of the week or different days of the week? What are the impacts on the building and with the students? But for sixth grade, you can see there, because again, we have a team of two teachers teaching four groups of students. We'll have groups, the modified remote group in-person, sorry, the modified remote group receiving their instruction with that support remotely on Mondays and Wednesdays, for example, and the in-person group on the flip side of those days. So there'll be two days a week of in-person instruction, two days a week of the modified remote. Of course, the students who, the families who choose to have remote instruction entirely... Of course, the students who, the families who choose to have remote instruction entirely. Will have their direct instruction provided in that way on those days. And then that enriched virtual learning day will continue as as it has. Seven and eight, you can see similarly where, again, we're going to have the the synchronous math. As well as some core taught synchronously and some core taught with support asynchronously. And just in comparison on the next slide, you can see the model that we're putting into place next week.
So just in our last presentation, I think we just presented what the trade-offs are. So we wanted to continue with that structure. So. In in taking a look at adding an additional day. One, one trade-off is that we'd have to readjust the UA schedule again. The class sizes are likely to be impacted, so we may have some groups that are a little bit larger in order to be able to get them in twice. And still be able to. To accommodate our asynchronous group, so we haven't fully fleshed that part out. There is a likely impact to the bus numbers on the additional days. And we would want to make sure that asynchronous time was working well because. And and really, I, you know, we're still using the word asynchronous, but it really is. Modified remote, I think, is the term that we kind of came up with. And thinking things through because it doesn't mean a fully synchronous day. I'm in seventh and eighth grade, they'll still have math and UAs. In sixth grade, we have Mrs. Pazdin, who would. Run homeroom and take attendance and be available all day long for sixth graders, and then they would still have a UA class. And we are looking at increased sizes for students these, oops, sorry. Go back. These numbers are not accurate. I've redone them a couple of times. So really. Monday and Tuesday, I think we're looking at 20 extra students on Monday and 55. On Tuesday and Wednesday, and then Thursday would be 65 and Friday would be more like 40. So. It is increased numbers. These are not correct. I'm sorry, I I played with the numbers a couple of different times and the numbers didn't update. In the slide deck as after I shared it on the screen. We are concerned about subs if we have teachers who may need to be absent because we are not bringing subs into the building at this point for elementary. So if there's a need for middle school teachers to be out, we, it's just one of the, one of our worries. And it will also, this. To bring kids back one day a week has required a rescheduling of special education services, so that would have to be done again. Because we have some special transportation involved and I'm going to kind of, this is the last slide, so I'm going to stop sharing and turn it over to Ayesha to talk a little bit about. The impact of that scheduling piece.
Thanks. So just like Susan said, that with the middle school students returning to school. We have to, you know, reschedule the the services, the amount, not necessarily the amount of services, but. When the services are being delivered, especially with the modified remote day. The sixth grade, as Susan has said as well, is is utilizing Miss Pazdin for that modified. Remote day to provide that support, having an open Zoom so that students during the during the day can touch base with her, she can support them. But that model may not work. If we, when we go into adding that second day, we would just have to look at that, that model once again, so that. We provide the services that all students need, both regular ed and special ed. And also the transportation, the special transportation will be affected as well because the time of in-person services will then change.
Is that it?
That's it. I'm sorry, I was just playing with my mute button and it wasn't working right, so I I imagine there are questions or comments, so.
Yeah.
We're ready.
All right, Tom.
Susan and team, thank you. This is a lot of work that you've done and clearly you put a lot of thought. And consideration into this plan. Just curious, the the plan that you put forth, was that? Finalized today or was it finalized prior to today?
Do you mean adding an additional day?
No, I mean, so candidly. I will only speak for myself, but if that presentation and this, these thoughts were done prior to today. I would have preferred to have received a copy of that presentation for review. So that I can be more thoughtful and constructive in my questions and feedback. And this is the second time in a row that we've had a plan popped on us at the board meeting, not even put into board doc. So frankly speaking, I'm. Disappointed in that, and I'd like to be better prepared to have more thoughtful comments. I do have some thoughts and comments that I'm gonna. Questions that I'm gonna ask, but I'm wondering if there was a reason why it wasn't shared prior to the meeting. Because it's clear that you did the work prior to the meeting.
Yeah, we did do the work prior to the meeting. Honestly, I didn't realize that was your expectation. We haven't always put the presentations that we've done into board docs, we've presented them at the meetings before. So I apologize if that was an expectation that we didn't clearly understand.
No, no worries. Apology accepted. It was communicated at the last meeting, I believe. By Greg Duffy and hopefully going forward, especially around back to school plans. The board needs to be able to see what's going to be happening before the meeting. So that we can be more thoughtful in our preparation, my opinion. I'm only speaking for myself.
We can make sure that we we have that done for next time, for sure.
Thank you. So that said. The cohort sizes for six, it's 11, 11 and 10, for seven, it's 10 and 11, for eight, it's nine, nine and 10. Well, what is the, what's the driver of the cohort size? Is it CDC guidelines? Is it Northampton guidelines? Is it SAU-wide guidelines? What's the driver of the cohort size being, you know, 11, 11 and 10 versus, you know, 15 and 16?
Part of it is the six-foot spacing that we're trying to accomplish within the classrooms and being able to. Space the decks, the desks six feet apart for, which is one of the guidelines we've been following that came from CDC. We've also tried to keep our class sizes lower than 15 and 16 in in every instance. We recognize that there may be, there may come a time in the not-too-distant future where we're able to relax some of those. Requirements, but we're trying to stay between 10 and 12, and we worked with the numbers that we had. And the numbers of students that elected to stay fully remote and and that was the schedule that we came up with.
So each of the rooms can only accommodate. 10 or 12 students and and have them being six feet apart. Is that correct?
They can probably take 13 or 14, but the way the numbers played out, we put them in groups this size to start with. And we are, you know, able to to reassess. And see how that goes after we get them into the building and see how the traffic flows work and all of that. And and as I said, I do think particularly sixth grade with a two-person team, we may be looking at. Like increasing those class sizes. So we, we, you know, we're willing to take a look at it, but we wanted to start in the safest way we possibly could. And the way the numbers played themselves out with the percentage of kids who. In some cases, wanted to stay remote, this seemed to be. What people were most comfortable with in our school.
So. Go ahead, Greg.
So I just want to be clear, because. We've had this conversation at least 42 times. And size of classroom and size of space has not been the issue. It was very clearly laid out to me that it's not about the size and the six-foot spacing. It is about the CDC and the and the New Hampshire Department of Safety's recommendation. That cohort sizes of 10 to 12 be maintained. So when you start with the size of the classroom, it's. It's contradictory to the conversations we've had in the past, and it makes it difficult for us to put our hands around. What exactly are the limitations of putting our kids back in school? Because I keep hearing two opposing things. So I'd like to land one so we can be consistent and accurate in our communication with the community. And also just to make sure that we're, we have everything on the table, so we know what we're dealing with. So so my opinion, from what I've been told, I'm asking this question with Dr. Vatini and and all of us here. That it's not size and space that it is cohorts.
It's, it is, it is a combination of the two, though, because, you know, we're, we're working for a cohort size. But we have to make sure that we can space the kids apart at the same time. So it really, you know. We want this, we want the space and the cohort size. The cohort size is the more important of the two. But honestly, you know, like you asked if we could fit more desks in, yeah, we could, but. We're going for the cohort size, but we need to make sure the spacing is appropriate as well. And honestly, you know, it is a challenge to have a functional classroom with only desks. So there are other things in a classroom too. So, you know, it, it, it's mostly the cohort size and the student teacher ratio. But there is an issue, is we have plenty of classrooms in the building, but within each room, you have to make it. So that it it's safe for everyone.
Yeah, and I I guess I would add to that too, just connecting with, again, with previous conversations that we've had, because I do think it 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 helps. For that clarity that you were speaking of, it's, it's also a matter of the instructional model that can be in place in a in a given space. So while we could, for example. Put students in a, in a, in the gym six feet apart and have, you know, 20 students there, there's a couple of issues with that. First of all, it's beyond the the size of the safe cohort size that's been established. But also structurally not sound for students to, you know, watch them. Being zoomed in, you know, watch other students being taught in a different space. So. It, you know, I I understand the need for clarity on exactly what the issues are, but I think, as we said, it's the intersection of these things that does make it more complicated.
Yeah.
It is. Good, great. You, you made that very clear at the last meeting back in, and that was a point that I appreciated is that there's a, there's an efficiency to the, to the amount of kids as well. In that same conversation we had, it was very clear that it's not about space, it's about efficiency and cohort sizes. So I'm just saying, for clarity's sake, the answer here should not be space. The answer here should be efficiency of teaching and cohort sizes to to keep everybody safe. Because when we keep introducing space into it, it's, it confuses the matter.
Correct. Correct. And and so, Becca, a quick question for you. You you raised something that we talked about the last meeting. From a social emotional learning perspective, you know, one of the things that we may want to consider in the future is allowing. Students, a group of students, say, one of the 11 cohorts of sixth graders. Into the gym or the cafeteria to be doing a lesson asynchronously, a lesson, say, math. And then after math, going upstairs, when they're, when they're. Another cohort's learning synchronously in classroom, right? And then having, rather than zooming and zooming room, and then swapping out and then having. A a group of kids go upstairs for language arts and the other kids come down and they're learning synchronous, asynchronously for language arts. Just getting the kids back in. Having them interact with each other safely, not putting anybody at risk. We have plenty of space. I think there may be some creative ways to finding. Ways to get more kids in the building sooner than, you know, just having 10, 11 kids in a classroom at a time. I I I fear that we've got one shot to educate these students, they're in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, one time, hopefully. This is their their chance. We need to put our best foot forward the second half of this year, and I know everyone's been working hard. I just want to challenge us to to do as much as we can and stretch as far as we can to get as many of these kids in. Speaking of which, the one shot, have we done any testing of our students in sixth, seventh and eighth grade to see how they're doing? Compared to where we expect them to be at this time of the year?
We have, and in the administrative report, we have a presentation for you about the test results, and we're very pleased with them.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I have a question.
I more of a comment, I guess. I know we've talked about shuffling kids around, and I guess my understanding of the cohort. Of kids staying in the classroom, teachers move from one to the next. So that we're not having the kids go from one place to the next, then that involves cleaning. Because if we start intermingling them in spaces, whatever that space may be. Will probably require them cleaning each time one group leaves, next one comes and those types of things. So. Maybe the space isn't the best word to describe our issues and keeping a small cohort for that particular reason. And if we need to close school or that one class, then that can happen over saying now, well, we had 40 in the gym today. Touching and feeling the same stuff. So I don't know, I kind of get it to to where the issue is on, let's avoid the space conversation. But I see why those cohorts are are the way they are and and for what reasons, I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if I can just add, you know, I, this, the space word. I understand how that can be kind of. Controversial, because it's not, you know, when I, when we talk about space across districts and in schools with different models. It's, you know, not about necessarily, is this room big enough? Is that room big enough? Do we have enough rooms? It's truly about the six-foot spacing between kids, and then that helps to determine, to determine the cohort. But the code, the the philosophy around the cohorting is a whole separate piece. So it's true, those are two different. Concepts and the and the cohorting is so that when, and you've seen this with the, with your younger grades. When there's a case in a cohort, then we don't have to send home larger groups across cohorts. It's only sending home, it's only quarantining one cohort, so they don't have to be, like you said, you know, they don't have to be in a large phys ed class. They can stay in that cohort and then we're able to do the contact tracing, send a small group home, maybe one teacher, one EA and a busload. Rather than having them intermingle, share bathrooms, share floors and the transition time. So I can understand how the space can be, it can be confusing and a kind of a convoluted topic. So, you know, I think it's good that we we keep talking about it.
Yeah, I I think it's the clarity around what are our limitations of getting our kids back in school, and it's not space. So when you answer that question, it's space, it's confusing. So space plays into it, but that that's not the limitation, limitations. We want to maintain cohorts so we can contact trace and keep everybody safe. And we want to maintain the, I'll call it the intimacy of of the group for teaching and educational purposes effectiveness.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, and that makes sense. And so, and given the numbers that we have, when we have. Two, nine, nine and 10, even if you can fit 13 in a room, you wouldn't necessarily make a cohort of 13 and a cohort of seven. Right? So the space is kind of a moot point at that, at that point. If you have 20 kids, you're just going to split them in half. And we have the rooms that can accommodate that. So I understand where where you're coming from.
Yeah, and if we can get to cohorts of 15, right? I'm not saying that we can or we should, but if we can, we have this, the. Room, we should, we should do it because then it. Increases our frequency of having kids in in school. One quick question, are the, are the classrooms, how many classrooms are there on the third floor? I know they're set up as classrooms, but how many rooms are there on the third floor that could be used as classrooms?
There's four, there's four seventh and eighth grade rooms. There's two sixth grade rooms.
On the third floor or the second floor?
The second floor.
I'm talking about the third floor. Isn't there a third floor with rooms as well?
Just, no, it's just two offices. There's no classrooms.
Okay, they're not big enough for classrooms?
No, they're really small office spaces, very, very small crowded spaces.
Thank you for, for letting me know that. Thank you.
And did you? Oh, sorry. Then, did you say, I think you said in your, in your presentation, between 20 and 25%. Of students aren't ready to come back. You have almost a quarter of the middle school who are staying home. So so we don't have to face that yet as far as increasing the size of the cohort, because they need to stay home at this point anyway.
Question. Caroline, you you touched on this, but we have experience with that size cohort with the entire elementary school, correct? And do you feel that there are opportunities to make those cohorts in elementary school bigger? Do you feel like they are working at that size as they are? that there are opportunities to make those cohorts in elementary school bigger? Do you feel like they are working at that size as they are?
Are, are you asking Caroline or me?
Absolutely, Susan.
Susan.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like that is what's making, making us successful with the elementary grades, that the, you know, the teachers are comfortable, the kids are doing fine. Um, we have had the benefit of um, having the SAU RLA to back us up, to, to enable us to have those smaller sizes. And you know, our elementary class sizes started out smaller. So the middle school class sizes, as, as you know, start out at, you know, twenty, eighteen to twenty. So it takes more than a few kids to elect to be remote, to make our class sizes doable at the middle school and at the elementary school. It, it just happened naturally and, and we were able to take advantage of that. So, you know, I, I, you know, I keep hearing words like, we challenge you to think differently and, and honestly, I feel like the circumstances are tricky and um with all due respect, it feels like um I'd like to feel like we had the board's support with our work, and, and I'm not sure I feel that way at the moment.
It's a lot to Tom's, it's a lot to digest in, in, in a ten minute presentation, and now we have to ask questions. And yeah, in all fairness, I, I haven't had a chance to go through it and dig into it to understand how page one relates to page two, three and four. I'm just looking at items as you're cruising through and I'm making notes and I have a list of questions on it. So I, this is the danger of, of, of not having the pre-read. And I, and, and these past three meetings, I think, have come off, I agree with you, Sue, they've come off less supportive than I want them to, because we end up asking a lot of pointed questions. And I think, I think we need to all ask pointed questions. I don't like the venue in which we're doing it, and I definitely don't like not having a pre-read, so I can't prepare myself for a more thoughtful. Um, so I, speaking for myself, you, you have my support. I, I know you're working hard on it. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask some questions. And, and part of this is clarity for myself, so I can explain it to my constituents in the community as well as people that might be watching. But please don't misunderstand this as not supportive.
Can I, and Susan, my question wasn't to be unsupportive, it was actually to say we have a model in the elementary school that's working at that cohort size. We have experience. Can't we say that that's the right size because we already know that?
So I, I would agree with that a hundred percent. I mean, that's what's, and it's also, you know, I think, or me, the last time asked us a question about how the teachers are feeling. And I think that um the group sizes that have been running have enabled the teachers to feel really safe. And I think there is some apprehension about, you know, just the changes that are gonna be in numbers on buses and ins and outs of the, of the built school building. And so I think, you know, we're, we're ready to, to do it, but um we, you know, our teachers are our biggest resource in terms of, of making ki- making sure kids are connected and successful in school. And um, you know, they're doing a great job. They're doing a really great job. And um you know, there's, there's, it's, it's, you know, it's a school year in which we're kind of reinventing our schedules and reinventing ourself multiple times based on circumstances and um, it has been a challenge, and I feel as if we, we're all trying to rise to that challenge. And um I guess from my perspective, the question I would have for you is, 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 do you have feedback on the the recommendation to go from one day a week to two days a week?
I do. I have a question, a direct question on that.
Before we jump to that, can I address one more thing about Susan, your comment about support? Um, you and the administration and the teachers are supported. And as a matter of fact, there was an email in December uh from uh Greg uh with CC'd on it, because I talked to Greg about it to you, saying we were willing to be thought partners and work with you on this. Um, so back to Greg's point about having it popped on this, this meeting, that's the challenging part. Um, we're definitely willing to support with you, you, we, we do support you. We support the community, we support the teachers, but it's the community, the students, the teachers and the administration, everyone that needs to be supported. And um, we need to balance that. It can't just be a constituency or two. That needs to be all. Um, starting with the students. And I know that that's where your heart is, and uh, and you have that support and participation if you're, you know, it, it, we, we just need to see things ahead of time. Um, it changes the conversation entirely.
And I wanna, I, I wanna assure the board that we'll make sure the presentations are in before, before meetings from here on out. Um, I do want to add that, you know, the new pieces in this presentation are proposed to start for for at least a month. Uh, the pieces that, that um we've seen already are what, are what are happening on Monday that the board reviewed last month. Um, and I think the next presentation that, that the administration is going to share um will really re- um demonstrate that the progress of the students. And I think they're, they're using that as a, as a tool, as a way, as evidence to, to justify the next step. So but all that being said, we'll make sure it's um in the, in board docs prior to board meetings in the future.
Just to chime in real quick, too, for uh Susan and, and Caroline, you two, you made a great point. We're talking about cohorts and different things and how many students can a classroom take? And, you know, when the math works out for sixth grade, if it's eleven, eleven and ten for in-school, what's the point of doing thirteen, thirteen and six? Uh, there isn't. It just, it just works out to be that way. You split them out evenly. If we had, you know, if it was ten, ten and six, I'd say, yeah, okay, maybe we can kind of squeeze in the thirteen part and then get him in more often. But when we have so many students go back, um, then it just kind of makes sense to split them this way versus trying to push those limits when we don't need to push those limits at the time. And as the time goes on, if that's, if, if those lim- to say the spacing changes, they say stay four feet away wearing a mask, then great, let's, let's, let's do fifteen, fifteen and do them two days a week versus, or whatever the case may be with the numbers, but it just um, we have the numbers of students and, and when you look at it kind of logically, it just works. It doesn't make sense to do thirteen, thirteen and six.
Yeah, we're looking at this in isolation at North Hampton, and, and there are other that are having larger cohorts and having success as well. So it's, it's beyond the, the, this bubble, right? It's, it's even within the SAU. Um, so I'm just looking to, when I say challenge, it's not a challenging an individual, it's a, it's a looking more broadly and seeing what's working outside um in other places, even outside our state. Get the kids back in school. One shot. We got one shot.
This is it. So Sue, I had a, I had a question on the, so in the one day a week for January, which starts next week. And then on slide one, you said we're going to assess that and, and eventually move into February and go two days a week. So my, my question is, what, what does four weeks of assessment give you that moves you to two days a week? Like, what are you assessing? Are you assessing the effectiveness of the teaching? Are you assessing the um the, the actual um? What are you assessing?
Well, I, I mean, a couple of things. I mean, to be really honest, I think um we need to open up the communication with um middle school parents and make sure that we're getting the same um information about any kinds of exposures and any kind of potential spread of, of COVID nineteen. Um, so it's, is making sure that uh the daily health screening is done, making sure that um we're able to safely bring kids in and out with bus transportation, seeing the things that we have to tweak. Um, and then, you know, one of the largest things, and Becca may, may wish to speak to this, is, is just assessing the impact, and we talked about this last month, assessing the impact of that modified remote day, which does involve a little more independent work than kids have had. They've had a regular schedule um synchronously. And so we want to make sure that that's going to work out and that before we add a second day of that in order to bring kids in person for a second day. And then, and then it would really be a, a hybrid model at that point. Um, Becca, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I'll add on. I'm actually just gonna kind of combine something that you just said, as well as something that Aisha shared. So, for example, looking at our, our sixth grade is, is a prime example for this. So as we know, our sixth grade students, um, just because of their maturity level, their executive functioning skills, it's harder for them to be successful asynchronously. They really, that, that support is really important for our sixth graders. Um, right now with our, with the, what we're gonna start on, on Monday, we're very thankful to have Ms. Paston, their special education teacher assigned to the sixth grade um to support students throughout the day. And she and the team are working really closely to make sure that those asynchronous days are gonna be um really effective for our students. When we bring the sixth grade back, um, you know, in the goal of bringing them back twice a week, um, we're not gonna be able to have that same level of support from her because she's going to have to provide special education services during some of that time. Right now, with just the one day a week for, for the groups, we were able to provide services on Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays. Um, that won't be, we won't be able to have that um when, we know, when the students would be coming back two days a week. So there are a lot of things that we need to um to experience to know how we can best move forward. These are new uncharted grounds for us, and um, and we're just trying to be very um, very uh careful with our students um as we make these decisions.
Okay, so it's, so I get it. It struck me as a long time to go from one day a week to two days a week to have a four week assessment period. Is there an opportunity to, if we know that sort of the general COVID thing is a fourteen day incubation, is there a two week?
Well, I, I think the concern more is that um it's not actually very many iterations, if you think about it. I know it's, it's a month, but it's not, it's actually only doing it four times. And we know the first time is gonna be, it's, it's like the first time that we brought the students back into the building. It, it, you don't want that to be your data point, right? It's, it's gonna be everyone trying this for the first time, and what's that going to look like? So um, we would like to um, to go through the cycle of, of the, the asynchronous, like in-person and it um, and asynchronous days a few times to make an informed decision. I wouldn't want to do it just once or twice. It's not so much a COVID cycle. It's a, it's a learning cycle. And, and you can assess how well students are doing. And then like the next day, we're gonna need to have an assessment or two, like a genuine assessment. And as we, as we do in our classrooms, formative and substantive, um, to be able to, to know how well it's working and, and for students to be able to experience it and give us feedback and families as well.
So we said it's four weeks, but if I read that PowerPoint presentation uh right, uh, it doesn't switch until mid-February. Is that correct? So that's six weeks? It's a four week assessment, but then the schedule doesn't change till mid-February?
Well, it's, it, we're not starting until January eleventh, so mid-February is four weeks.
Okay, got it. Okay, my apology. Thank you for that clarification, Su- Susan.
So is there a way to, so I'm asking the question of, so those learnings that you talked about, Becca, is the, so when, once you've kind of evaluated those after those four weeks, is it possible to jump to three days in? And you know, I'm just, I'm looking at the cadence of one day in, another month, two days in. I don't know what the next plan is, another month, three days in. Like, by the time we get here, it's gonna be the end of the year. And I get, and so I don't, don't take this as non-supportive. I think some of us are more progressive and aggressive than others. And clearly, I'm not in the building and seen every single detail, but I will say I'm probably more aggressive with getting the kids back in. Um, so that's the, that's kind of the foundation for my questions usually.
So I, I guess, so I, I don't have a crystal ball, but I will tell you optimistically thinking, it's my sincere hope that by the beginning of the third trimester, we're looking at a very different set of circumstances and the ability to do way more with our kids. And you know, I, I, I'm not a hundred percent positive how this will play out with one day a week and two days a week, but my sense would be that once we hit two days a week, the next step is just back in.
And I, and I think our pieces-
Because I, I don't think there's a three and a four. I think there's like a two and then a five, honestly. That would be my, my thought on it.
That would be great. It doesn't seem like there's gonna be an all-in moment, because it seems like there's gonna be parents that want to keep their kids home. And as long as there's a number of those, you have to satisfy two models.
Yes.
Especially in middle school. That's right. So twenty to twenty-five percent of students are staying home for, for their reasons, whether it's health issues or, you know, their, their fear of being exposed. And we've learned that educators are in the two-way phase of getting the vaccines, which is between March and May. Um, so potentially, people will not be fully vaccinated until the end of May, um educators. Um, and that does not include children. Um, so as you, you know, if we're talking about adding a, a day in for students who do come in from one to two to three to four, that's adding up the asynchronous. It's increasing the asynchronous for the kids who are home exclusively remotely, because as you said, the middle school teachers have to satisfy two models. And they can't teach kids in the building and kids at home at the same time.
I know. The more we talk about this, the more I believe that our kids aren't going back to school this year, which is a terrible, might be an unpopular thing to say, but I feel like there's no winning scenario other than just saying we're going all in. Let's roll the dice and see what happens, but nobody wants to roll the dice without safety. But I, I don't, I, I don't know that hoping is gonna, is gonna get us there. And I don't know that we're going to get there.
Yeah, I, I mean, I wouldn't ignore the, all the the work and the, these hybrid plans um as saying we're not getting into school, because I think this is, this is an option. This is a compromise. This is uh on the way there. So like Susan said, we don't have a crystal ball, but this is a way to get the kids in safely and um, in a way where it keeps the integrity of their learning. Um, so I hope that's something that, that still seems of value to, to the board and, uh, and to parents.
So for the future, are there, are there any other schools in New Hampshire or even outside of New Hampshire that have some students learning in classroom and some students learning remotely, room and Zoom, as we've called it before?
So I, I think that there's, there's a distinction there, and, and I think that, well, a couple of things. I think there's a distinction, the, the room and Zoom, which is kind of the, the moniker that came out early on, um, is th- there's a distinction between rooming, or room and Zoom, which would be like interactive
Yeah.
with, a- and, and a live broadcast of what's going on in the classroom and just watching instruction. And I think that's we're, we're really leery of with our age group kids watching instruction and not being engaged in the instruction, if it's going to be um if it's going to be virtual. I, I do believe that if we get to a point where the restrictions aren't as tight on the numbers and that we can, you know, get more kids into the classroom at the same time, that we can come up with some creative ways to, to still service our kids who, who want to remain fully remote. And I would also be hopeful that there'd be fewer kids that want to remain fully remote, um, because I'm hopeful that the circumstances will get better.
So is that a guess there are other schools that are doing this?
That are doing, um-
Are there tools
A room and Zoom?
States that have kids in the classroom and some kids at home, interactive, live, synchronous learning?
So I'm aware of more of a live broadcast model than the interactive part because of the need to protect student confidentiality. So I, I think that, you know, there are places that have a teacher on the screen for kids at home, but that because there's so many things that go on in a classroom and the need to protect student confidentiality, that the zooming with the whole class that happens to be there is, is less prevalent. Um, and so it would be, you know, I, I think that there's a way to do some of this with smaller groups perhaps. Um, as we get, as we get further down the pike, but we've really made um a commitment, and I think our student achievement that you'll see um kind of um supports the fact that, that the instruction so far this year has been really engaging and interactive and not just watching, you know, a stand and deliver instruct, a stand and deliver lesson that I think, I think what, from what I've heard and from places I've talked to, I think that that's more prevalent in high school settings where, you know, there tend to be more lectures and um, you know, more independent work to start with. So that feels like a model that has been adopted by more high schools than middle schools, but I don't know if Dr. Hobbs or Dr. Eric Killian have um, have a perspective on that, too.
Yeah, so the closest we've gotten, our, our, as you know, the MOA doesn't allow for room and Zoom. But the closest that we've gotten, um, something that the high school's going to start with is a live- But the closest that we've gotten, um, something that the high school is going to start with is a live broadcast model. Because they also have a quarter of their students who will stay exclusively exclusively remote. But starting hybrid on Monday. And the live broadcast model is the teacher taking attendance at the beginning of the class. With the class, with the kids in the school, in the room and on the screen. And then they will be live broad, there will be a camera, live broadcast them. Um, live streaming, but the teacher is teaching the room. So the kids at home are just going to be watching that teacher teach the other kids. They're not going to be able to raise hand, ask questions. Or anything interactive for about an hour. And then at the end of the class, the teacher will turn back to the screen and. And do a final checkout, if you will, of the student. So so it's not, um, it's not room and zoom, it's not, um, teaching to that class at home. It's, um, it's watching live streaming.
So if I look at the spectrum of asynchronous. Live. Broadcast, which does include the ability to text and ask questions, even if they're answered afterwards, right? True, integrated, like, you know, interactive learning and then live learning. It seems like there's a spectrum there. So part of my question is, you know, is there space to get to get our students? Is it better to have them watching their teacher live? Than asynchronous doing work on their own?
Well, I would say no to that, but. It's not necessarily better, but there's a sacrifice. So if you do more live broadcast, you're gonna have less of an actual time for that teacher to do synchronous learning. Go ahead, Becca.
I was just gonna say that the 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 model that we're envisioning for our first step, and again, this is a great example of where we're gonna learn. From from the month of January is that our our students are going to have a lesson, for example, for. Lesson in in person and they're all going to receive that same quality in instruction. And the students who are going to be learning asynchronously will be doing something else productive. Um, but they're also going to receive that same quality in person lesson. The students who are learning remotely, the teachers are going to teach them. In um, in their own cohort so that as there is, as is being done now, the teachers actually teach to those students. It's interactive. They can use breakout rooms. They can ask questions. They can dissolve the screen. Um, in the model, the the broadcast model, the screen is not dissolved, the the practices. The the best practices that we've learned for remote instruction and there's been so much wonderful research on that this in the last year before that even, but especially recently. For our middle school students, I I I can't imagine that there would be a level of engagement that any of us would consider acceptable.
And on your continuum, Tom, if I may add.
Yeah.
I would, I would put synchronous ahead of live broadcast as far as quality.
Synchronous, yeah.
Synchronous is is more is higher quality than live broadcast, even though it may get you in the building.
Hundred, hundred percent. I I I totally agree with that. I didn't mean to misstate it. I did. Synchronous, it totally. So. Um, one, one last question. And and I might just be dense here, so forgive me. If there's gonna be a remote synchronous learning. Why doesn't that have issues with? Student confidentiality, the way. The way having kids in class and kids remote at the same time would have, as you stated, because it it's kids on camera. Either way, right? It it just doesn't add up for me.
Well, I I mean, the the one example I could give you is, um, special education services. So. You know, if there's a classroom full of students and, um, there's a student at home. Who's zooming in and seeing the whole class and their parents happen to be popping in and looking over their shoulder and they might see. Someone else's child misbehave or someone else else's child be redirected or someone else's child. Um, receive special education services that ought to be confidential there. You know, there there's a, there's a. That would be an issue. So I think, you know, if everyone's in their own home. They're not, you know, the the this, the support services that we're providing in the remote environment are. Provided either in person in the school because our special education students are coming in. Or they're, you know, in a breakout room or, you know, there's just different ways that we're able to do that. So there are just, there are certain things. That. You know, might be nuanced that I think could. Could 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 be problematic. And I think, um, the special education example is probably the clearest one.
Carve out special ed because we totally get that and and those students need additional services, um, and maybe one on one that I get that. But part of what I was hearing is that. There is a model for synchronous remote learning that we're considering, correct?
There are pieces of it in both plans, I believe.
Yeah, hundred percent. So if there's synchronous remote learning. This 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 concept that we can't have kids. In a classroom and other kids doing synchronous remote learning at the same time. Is incongruous to me because we're doing it. We're talking about doing it.
So 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 just to be clear, the the synchronous remote learning that will take place in this plan. Will take place in a separate block. So for example, if you picture like the four core teachers. So there's three groups coming in person.
Yeah.
So.
Pop up slides, I think it was slide seven that has the schedule and can you just run through? Like a a a day of what what those terms mean in in terms of synchronous asynchronous?
I I think it's easier to just explain it because the schedule doesn't give you this level of detail. It's just day, it just says Monday, Tuesday, so that that slide just said which grades were coming, which days.
What's that Monday asynchronous for number two block? Modified for number one block. And my question is, what is modified? And so.
So that's, that's what we were saying about the, so one of the things we're working on and 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 we wanna make sure that we're able to do is. On the asynchronous day, not having it be fully asynchronous, which is why we kind of. Renamed it modified remote because it's not a full asynchronous day. For example, seventh and eighth graders will have a live math class because. We have a separate eighth eighth grade math teacher and a separate seventh grade math teacher. So that can stay. So when the seventh graders are there in person, the eighth grade math teacher is still available to teach eighth grade math class. Right?
It's synchronously, because that's.
Yes, synchronously. And so and conversely. On the day that the seventh graders, the day that the eighth graders are there, the seventh grade math teacher is still available to teach synchronous math. And the UA teachers are still available to teach synchronous UA classes. And then for sixth grade, we don't have quite that luxury, but we do have the availability of a case manager. Who can run a homeroom and explain. Um, lessons and provide support to any child and then have a synchronous UA class. So. So on the asynchronous days, they're not fully asynchronous. They're not just, okay, here's your Google Classroom work for the day. We have people that will be meeting with kids and checking in and providing support. So. That piece is is really gonna, I think, work out well. But so so if you think about, so for example, think about the eighth grade day. And there's four core teachers. So there'll be a lot, a group in person for. Language arts, a group in person for social studies, a group in person for science. And then the math teacher can zoom out to the kids who are at home and then you switch to the next period. And the and then it's the social studies teacher who's zooming out to the kids at home. So they're not zooming out from. A group of students in front of them. They're they're zooming out separately with that remote group.
Model, Tom, is no different than how we're doing it right now.
Yeah, but so my my point is this, uh, and I do. Zoom and Teams meetings all day and 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 I've also done them with people live in a in a room with me. And people remote, right? What I'm hearing, and I could be wrong, so I wanna be corrected. What I'm hearing is that we can't do. A teacher teaching ten kids in a class and. Uh, some kids at home at the same time because there are confidentiality issues. What I'm also hearing is that we're gonna teach kids remotely. And there's no confidentiality issues. It it doesn't add up to me. Why would we have kids? Teaching, learning anything asynchronously if they can zoom in and be part of their class, even if it's remote. While other kids are in the class and then the next day. Or later on the week, they switch and some of the kids are at home learning. Uh, looking, watching their teacher instruct them live. And other kids are in the class. It 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 doesn't add up that we can have teachers teach asynchronously on Zoom one day. But if there's kids in the classroom. We can't. And I'm just trying to understand that. It it is a is asynchronous better? Than synchronous remote?
I I think what, I think what, well, go ahead, Caroline.
Well, it's kind of, I think it's two things. So confidentiality is is one piece and then there's the room and zoom in the MOA piece. So.
I'm sorry, what's the MOA?
So the memorandum of agreement.
Oh, so this is had, this has to do with, um, with the contract and the the the, uh, the.
So that's one, like a teacher can't teach the room and a whole class on on the screen at the same time. So that's.
That's not part of the MOA. The the MOA doesn't prevent that. The MOA, very, and we talked a lot about this when it was being drafted. MOA says that the teachers shall not be required to.
True.
They don't want to, we need to say that out loud.
That's right. They can, they can opt in to do that, sure.
Right.
But we can't create a plan as administrators to and require them to do that. That that's absolutely right.
Got it. We need, we need to put, we need to put a fine point on this and 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 we've got. Uh, great teachers that I know are talented and can do this. The question is, are we willing to do it for our students? Um, and we had a lot of conversation and a lot of conversation about the MOA. These are some of the questions that were brought up. And the question is, well, why? Why is it important? And I think we need to put it on the table about why it's important. If we if we don't do this, because we can do it, but we're not willing to do it. And we need to explain to the community why we're not willing to do it.
So I I I guess I would respectfully say I don't think it's a matter of not being willing to do what what's best for kids. I think. We feel that this, that what we've put forth to you meets all students' needs and. You know, if down the road, we're able to have some larger groups and and figure out some ways to. To perhaps modify the the remote. Portion depending on who's still interested in the remote portion. We're willing to, we're willing to do that, but we think that what we've put forward to you really is in students' best interest. It 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 provides the remote piece for the people who are asking for it and it provides the in-person component. And it and it provides for. For support from teachers remotely, um, in in a way that we believe is meaningful and. I I think, I I guess, I feel like we're having a conversation that's getting us so far down the road. With a set of circumstances that we don't yet have. So. I I mean, I think that there 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 are. There are things that stay on the table all through this as 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 we move through these processes. So, you know, as we said, we'd like to. Have the kids come back one day a week, starting on Monday, and we'd like to increase it to two days a week. And then if we're able to figure out the next steps, we're really hopeful that it's something that engages everybody. On 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 the. On the best level that we can and and I'm really hopeful that we're back. I I just, you know, I like I said, I don't have that crystal ball, but I don't, I don't see. I don't see the doom and gloom of the whole year. I really don't. And and I think that, you know, there. I I feel like the what's proposed will meet student needs and get kids in the building.
Let me, uh, can I chime in here real quick? I was just looking at at the schedule for for my, uh, son who's going into sixth grade. Uh, what is the benefit of him being in on Monday? And then watching that same lesson on a Tuesday when he has that asynchronous day? There isn't one, right? I'd rather him do his math. I guess he's gonna check in with Ms. Pasden in the morning. Has LA math snack, UA for Spanish, lunch communities and science. I don't see a benefit of him being in on that Monday and then on Tuesday when he's asynchronous to watch that same lesson. And I think if I remember correctly, going back to this conversation early, early on, I think logistically. Uh, technology wise, our capabilities of live streaming each and every single crack classroom, our school can't support it. Nor do we have the cameras and not even, I mean, I don't know, can they do the computer? If I'm teaching you all from here, how much can you see over there for a child at home? So I kinda see some of those little, uh, little issues of of logistically how that would work out. But again, I would, Sue, I, uh. The teachers have put in tremendous amount of work and, uh, as you all have. Uh, to put these schedules together and adjust this, but for for myself and my son. I would not want him be watching a TV of a teacher teaching the kids the same thing that he took the day before. Or thereafter, or whatever the case may be, where he can productively use that time. With Miss Pazan or alone to do his homework, to do his reading, to do his write-ups, to do his research, to do his science project, whatever. Um, so. It's a tough balance. I'm I I want him in school. I'm taking a huge risk sending him in. Potential exposures, the works, but you know what? For the benefit of him, yes, great. I want him in five days a week. We all do. To start off with this, I think the schedule, um, will work out fine for even asynchronous days. In the future, how that looks, hopefully, I'm with you. I'm a little, uh, optimistic here on the cases and the vaccine coming out. And getting these things a little under control where we just go in five days.
Yeah, so Narmina, uh, to your point. I believe that the schedule that's being proposed is gonna be the schedule that's gonna be approved for for the next four weeks, starting on the eleventh. So there's no question about that. I'm asking questions about the future and in the future. It wouldn't be a. Watching, being in classroom. And learning one thing and then watching it live the next day. It would be a progressive. Each day is a new lesson plan and and students are, um, consuming it in different ways, either live. Or remotely. And that's, that's all I'm suggesting because I believe.
And that might be an option for us if we decide to go five days a week for those families that don't want to.
Correct.
And I can definitely see that at that point, yes.
Correct. But what I was hearing before was that we can't do it because of confidentiality issues and I wanted to. Um, dig into that a little bit because.
Can I clarify that? So so if we were to end up in that position where most kids were coming back full time and we had some kids. That required what you're suggesting, there would have to be a modification in terms of them just not seeing the whole class. Right? They they see just the teacher.
Well, so when they're all learning remotely, um, synchronously. Um, are they on screen in a panel view as I have right now on my screen?
They, well, yes, and they have the option of turning their camera off.
Correct. And they still would, even if some kids were in the classroom and some kids were remote, right? So I I'm still stuck on the what's the difference? I don't wanna dig into this anymore. We've got other stuff on the agenda. But this is why I was saying, uh, I would like to see information upfront. I'd like to partner. Um, to think through some of these things. Uh, with you if we if we with the administration, if we can, ahead of time. And I'd like to, um, see what we can really do. Um, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the, uh, next four week plan. Um, and I think, in my opinion, I can only speak for me and I'm only one person. If the four other members of the board disagree. Um, if the administration disagrees, then I'm the outlier and I'll I'll stand on my own. But I'd like to find a way to do more faster if we can.
Tom, really quick answer on that. The, if you're on the screen, you can turn off the video, but if you're in the room, you can't.
But I don't need to see the kids. I need to see the teacher, right? I don't need to.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is for the whole class. So that that was, I'm just trying to answer that question as far as. Suggestion is that you're not zooming the whole class. No, I get, I get that.
See my class, and I need to see my teacher and the and the board.
Right, right.
Sparkboard, right?
No, I'm understood. I'm I'm just saying as far as that component, so.
I, yeah, I think Becca can can give some, um, perspective about what a lesson actually looks like.
Yeah, so I I guess for me, I I'm I'm hoping that we can go back and and remember the.
Yeah, so I I guess for me, I I'm I'm hoping that we can go back and and remember the um, the conversation that we had at the last school board meeting and. And I I feel like um. You know, I I think it's. Our, right now, the um, the instruction that we have um, is is very positive. So. Our students, while absolutely, there's the social emotional piece. Abs, we totally agree um, that our students, you know, we're excited to bring them back into the building um, next week. Um, we know that that's important for them. Um, but there, the instruction, the learning that's happening is is really effective. Like our our teachers are doing an amazing job. Our students are doing an amazing job. Our families are doing an amazing job. So our students are learning. Um, it's working, it's age appropriate. Um, we have, we we have the technology tools, we have the best practices in place to dissolve the screen, to use the breakout rooms to do. Um, the assessment practices, like. Our students are learning and that we're we're positive about that that aspect of of this living in this pandemic. That's something that Northampton School can be proud of. Um, I know there are other places. Where there's, they're not having that level of success, where their teachers are looking at a bunch of black boxes. And that's not happening at Northampton School. And if that was, then I would consider a a broad, watching a broadcast to be an improvement. But it wouldn't be an improvement, educationally speaking, on what our students are experiencing now in the middle school. So I I feel really strongly about that. Is my, the, you know, part of the focus of my job to be on our students' teaching and learning. Um, that that. It, that would be um, a broadcast piece would be a really difficult thing for me to swallow um, for our students' learning. And I worry about the compounding effects that would have with the disruption of education that happened in the spring.
Yeah, thank you, Becca. You you made that point last week and for me, that was a moment of clarity. Uh, that we could do it, but the instruction has to change so dramatically. That this, I'll call it zoom in room, because that's kind of what it is. And the remote direct learning, it's completely two different educational models. And so. Thank you for clarifying that. I I do think at some point we may, we may get, again, this is future thinking, we may get to the point where. The needs of the many are gonna have to outweigh the needs of the few and we're gonna have to make some concessions and. And that may be a very real and difficult conversation, but we can't. We we need to make it at some point. We we have to have a. Uh, a tipping point, if you will. And so I I echo with Tom about, I think the one day. And and then the assessment, uh, and then moving to the two day. I think my only ch- challenge to you, I guess, if that's the right way to say it, is. Can we, can we, can we do, can we shorten that assessment and try to do a little bit more quicker? That's all. I I don't want to bypass any of the learnings. I'm just. I move, my tendency is. Quick, move, move quick.
I have a a real appreciation for the fact that we can't put a stake in the ground with this pandemic. Having planned three weddings for one daughter now that have not happened. This is like a fluid moving process here. And it can't be predicted. Now we are at the the biggest spike. With this pandemic that we've had. So going in one day a week, I think is prudent. And understanding how it's gonna impact our s- our students and for the health and safety of everybody, it just makes sense.
Yeah. I I did have a couple clarifying questions, just so I understand, stand better. Uh, one of the terms, uh, modified. Um, in one day, there's a modified. Uh, synchronous and then there's a. There's asynchronous. So modified is sort of what we know today of of the synchronous learning. Be a zoom or is that the live? Portion?
It it's just. Go ahead, I, go ahead, Aisha.
Um, we're, we're trying to use um, from my, a different language to describe. The asynchronous day. So when we're saying it's modified, that's where. For sixth grade specifically. You know, Ms. Ms. Pazin has the homeroom and then they have a schedule. Of their um, LA math, UAs that they're. They're per, they're participating in and those things. And Ms. Pazin also has her zoom up for. Any um, supports that the students need. So they're not. Completely asynchronous, doing complete independent. Um, assignments and those things.
Okay, so is that the part that's asynchronous with support?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
But but in seventh and eighth grade, it's actually synchronous. So that's why we, that's why we called the term modified, which. Which probably was just confusing, so I'm sorry for that.
Yeah, you is, we all just got it all down and then you went.
Well, because, because we thought it was better than asynchronous and we wanted to. We wanted to communicate that.
Okay. Um. Okay. Those are all my questions. Anyone else have any more? Questions? All right, so. Thank you for that discussion. Thank you for taking the time and the patience, everybody, to to kind of poke holes and just poke. And so we all have a better understanding of it. I don't. Please don't take it as non-supportive. Uh, we really appreciate all the work and all the thought and all the different scenarios that you're putting forward. We're trying to think of our community and not just our own kids, but everyone's kids and all the. All the strange circumstances that people have to deal with from job-related to home care, to healthcare, to childcare and. It's a big, it's a big nut to crack. So I appreciate. The patience and the time answering all the the detailed level of questioning. Um. So move, so do we need? Do we need to do anything here right now? There is no vote, right? This was.
Correct.
Yep, okay. All right, whoa, moving on, I gotta refine myself on this agenda. Number eight, I think we're in written reports.
Yep.
And that. Principals report.
Yep. So um, in the written report, there's really not um. That we, I wrote a little bit about the talent show and and you've also. Been aware that the middle school student government has worked on the video announcements and that's just continued to be really successful and and well-received. Um, those Friday video announcements. And then I just wanted to give an update about open circle training because. Um, you know, one of the things that actually has been beneficial for teacher trainings is. The offerings all being virtual and online and it has enabled, in our case, it enabled almost all of our elementary. Staff to participate in. Open circle trainings. That would have been difficult. Um, the drive to Wellesley. I think was, would have been overwhelming for some of our our teachers to do on a regular basis. And so we we've been able to. Um, utilize the online open circle training and um, teachers are doing that. Um, on a pretty regular basis. I think they have, what, is it once a month, Becca? Each different cohort. Has their open circle group?
Yeah, um, yeah, they're stretched out a little bit more than that, but.
Yeah, and then I just put the transportation numbers, like the, what the bus company estimated based on the survey results that we had from the middle school. Um, the difference in um, numbers on the buses. Because um. You you know, we did have the experience, we do have the experience of knowing that the elementary parents have gotten used to a certain number of students on the bus. So we wanted to communicate. To the whole school community, how those numbers could change and give parents an opportunity to. Um, opt in or out of the bus if if that. Uh, if the numbers are changing on their child's bus. So. Um, you can see those numbers there. And then the one thing that isn't on here. Um, we have worked with the rec department and added um, a bus for for students that signed up for rec. Rec after-school program um, in the elementary grades and that bus is, has fewer kids on it and that. I don't really know the numbers because that's dependent upon. The enrollment and that's been a fluid um, situation. So Mary Beth gets those numbers from um. Joe Manzi uh, as as they kind of come in. Then the the other piece that we wanted to share with you was the assessment. Um, results from the middle school. And again, so I'll just uh, preface this with an apology for not having sent this to you too. Um, but I can, I'll share both of these afterwards and. Um, this is what we actually believe to be some pretty good news. So I'm gonna share my screen again. And Becca's going to provide um, an overview about the assessments that we used and then. Um, I'll talk a little bit about the language arts and she'll talk a little bit about math and then. We can answer any more questions that you may have.
All right, so I'll, I'll take it from here for a little bit before handing it back to Susan. Thank you. Um, so we're using benchmarking tools in all of our K to A classrooms in order to both inform instruction. Um, for our students as well as to consider the needs of our system. Um, we were unable to administer the spring SAS um, state, the state assessment. So I'm happy to still be able to make this data presentation to the board, even though it's not gonna be an apples to apples as it was last year and the year before. Because we're presenting different, different data today. Next slide please. So as you can see, see here, there's many factors that impact student achievement. Um, the quality of instruction, particularly as it engages students. And connects to curriculum standards is one key factor. Uh, we also recognize the importance of other factors such as connection, student motivation and student support. So in order to assess, assess our students' achievement levels in ELA in English Language Arts. We utilize the Hutton Mifflin Heart Court Reading Inventory. And so when I refer to the acronym HMH, that's what we're referring to. Um, this adaptive software provides our teachers with a research-based growth assessment of each student's current reading level by providing a Lexile range. Um, this range speaks to the text complex, complexity uh, level with which a student can successfully engage. And you can see here the ranges for our middle school grades. And so for math, uh, we've actually piloted two different assessments. In eighth grade, we use the STAR assessment, which is. Um, an adaptive, nationally-normed assessment of grade level standards. In the sixth and seventh grades, we use the interim SAS assessment, which also assesses grade level Common Core standards. Both the STAR and the interim SAS are formative, meaning they're intended to help teachers in their instructional planning. For individual students and for the whole class. So, um, oh, so these are, sorry, I was, I was on a different slide. I wasn't paying attention. And so these are the um, the strands from the Common Core State Standard and these connect really nicely, very purposefully. Um, to the competencies that we um, use for our grading and reporting.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the language arts testing and um. The the reading level changes that we've seen. And so there is these, this is an apples-to-apples test comparison, but the. The um. Frequency with which the test was administered has has um. Is different for each grade. So this, this is um. Uh, using benchmark testing in the middle school is something that we're working towards doing more. And so some of this is is new. Um, to us. So um, in sixth grade, students took the, the initial benchmark test in October and then again in November. And you can see the increase just in that short amount of time in reading level. Um, so what we would like to see, when we, when you look at test scores like this, is you wanna see, obviously, your advanced and proficient. Numbers go up. And your basic and below basic numbers go down. That's what we're looking to see happen. Um, a gain of fifty Lexiles. Um, at this particular grade level is equivalent to a year's worth of growth, according to this particular test. And so we saw fifty-six percent of our kids. Show that much growth. In 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 just a short amount of time. In seventh grade, we saw sixty-two percent of them show that amount of growth and this, the, the, the difference in. Um. Time between the test administrations was longer. This was ten months. And as you can see, the trend is is still in the, in the direction that we'd like to see and pretty consistent with what you would expect if we were in school. Where, you know. Um. Where uh, you know, seventy to eighty percent of our kids are scoring proficient or above. In eighth grade, um, you can see that fifty-seven percent of the kids, and this was a longer time even between tests. But fifty-seven percent are scoring advanced. Um, and that's a big increase from the last time they took the test. Um, this number goes down a little bit, but it's because that number went up so much, I would say. And then um. The bullet basic and below basic scores are going down, which is what we would like to see. So. The highlights here are um, for grade six, there was one month between administrations and we saw proficient and advanced numbers go from forty-seven percent. To seventy-two percent. Um, for seventh grade, there was ten months in between the tests. And we saw proficient and advanced numbers go from sixty-eight percent to seventy-six percent. And in eighth grade, there was a longer time between tests. Eighteen months. They went from seventy-three percent to eighty-one percent proficient and advanced. And that's in that particular grade level. So because we, we feel like data really just tells a story. Um, the story that we're seeing is our kids are where we would expect them to be. Um, and 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 about the expected percentage of them are where we would expect them to be. So. It tells us that what we've been doing so far, we believe, has met their needs. Um, for discussion and reading and interpreting text. Again, this, this assessment is a little different than the math assessment. Because it it basically gives us a reading level, which enables the teachers. To to, you know, give the right entry point with their instruction. So what we need to do is to continue to promote reading of high-quality text. And we've actually invested a lot of um. Money into buying more high-quality reading materials for our middle schoolers so that they're. Reading interesting and relevant texts that lend themselves to discussion and and higher-order thinking skills. Um, and we need to continue to assess the interventions and services that students receive who are not reading at the expected levels.
All right, so I'll take that, take over again for the math data. And so in grade six, we gave the grade six interim SAS. Which measures student achievement of their twenty-twenty-one school year learning goals. So in other words, much of the material assessed. Has not yet been taught this year. Um, so we were pleased to have about thirty percent of our students score proficient or above on this assessment. And we're not surprised to see so many students approaching as we're less than halfway through the school year when this assessment was given. Um, overall, the um, interim SAS showed a strength in um, two uh, strands of ratios. And proportional relationships and of number systems. Will be instructing in the areas of geometry, probability and statistics and expressions and equations. Those will be um, the focuses for us there. And because it's intended to be taken at the start of the school year, the seventh grade interim SAS assessed curriculum standards from the previous year. So forty-six, forty-six percent of our students scored in the proficient or above and another forty-six percent scored at approaching. Speak a little bit more to that on the next slide. So again, as a formative assessment that helps us to think about our areas of um, of uh, growth and our areas of strength. The data showed that while our students were generally strong in both geometry, probability and statistics. The content strands of expression and equation is a big area of growth for most of our seventh grade students. We did expect this because it was in the midst of this study that the disruption of learning um, occurred in the spring. And this unit has not yet occurred um, in the school year. It's upcoming, I believe it's the end of February, beginning of March, where our seventh graders will engage in that again. For our eighth grade, they use the um, STAR assessment. And so the STAR data uses a different proficiency scale. So you can see the categories here. This benchmarking tool suggested eighty-five percent of our students are either proficient or advanced. And another five are on watch for possible additional support through intervention. Um, these results aligned with our current, align with our current implementation of Algebra I enrichment for those students who are ready and choose to take on that challenge. So um, you can see here some of the inferences that I've shared about the math data. Um, these results are being used uh, by our teachers as a data point. To both suggest individual needs for students, um, as well as the overall instruction, instructional planning for a given unit and um, the school year still to come.
I think that's it, right?
Yeah. Can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
For the sixth grade performance, which was, which was lower. You said to be expected because they were tested in January, not even halfway through, or I'm sorry, they were tested in December, not even halfway through the year. But the seventh grade and eighth grade were tested early as well, I think November it said. And they performed better. So.
Right, so, so actually, so just to be really transparent, um, this is the first time that we have used this tool. They're piloting across the board for both the interim SAS, um, as well as for the um, the STAR. And um, the, the, the students in sixth grade, if we were to get the data point that compares to the other two grades, we should have given them. As was intended, the fifth, the fifth grade interim. So the directions from um, the DOE on this is that when you give it in the fall, you give the previous years. And instead, we gave the current year.
What month was it given?
Um, it was uh, no, end of November, I believe.
So well into the, so it wasn't like in September, where you give.
No, but but it 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 assesses students on units that they haven't seen yet.
Got it. And so tell me more about why, why we use two different tools, SAS and STAR.
So um, we had not really planned on, on doing benchmark, as we planned for the school year. Um, and uh, Dr. Hobbs can probably speak to this a little bit as well. Um, we had conversations um, as an SAU about, okay, how are we going to? figure out what our students know? And we at Northampton School for our middle school grades don't have a tool aside from the HMH. And as Susan shared, it had, it wasn't something that was given consistently. It was a tool that was, was used by one particular teacher really well, but not necessarily across the board for all. And so we didn't have something in place already. And so in discussions in our, in our groups, we kind of looked at, well, what, what's available? And one thing that we were fortunate enough to receive for free this year with our Freckle subscription was Star Math. And so Drew Zalega suggested that he pilot that to see how, it, it's very different from the SAS. But he thought it might be an interesting tool, especially as it was, it was going to meet the needs for his decisions around algebra. And then for, and then for sixth and seventh grade, our students were already used to using the SAS for their spring assessment. This is a new tool for us, using it as a, it's a special, shorter, intended for different reasons. It's intended to be formative versus the spring big SAS, which is a much longer exam, is intended to be summative and used, you know, but for, for school-wide generalizations. The interim is meant to be a formative given in the spring and specifically the DOE kind of pushed, putting it out there so we all knew about it because they thought it might be useful in this situation. I don't know, Dr. Hobbs, do you want to say more about that?
Yeah, I mean, there was certainly some anxiety around using the interim SAS just because of the, the number of students that were remote. But Tom, I think you, you're putting your finger on something that, that we're seeing across the SAU. And it's just one of the, you know, limitations, if you will, of local control. You see Northampton itself having two or three different assessments, these benchmark assessments. If we look at across the SAU, we're seeing, you know, the Remote Learning Academy is using a tool called iXL. We've got schools using Ames Web for, for diagnostics. We've got schools using NEEWA for diagnostics. And, and while they, they all flagged tier-two interventions, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. And that's something I think, you know, we need to be transparent about. You know, the decision we made in terms of the, the diagnosis, diagnostics this fall was obviously, we wanted to make sure that we gave something that was useful for teachers and immediately useful for, for instruction. But I think, I think you're putting your finger on a long-term goal that needs to be a long-term goal, which is more of an apples-to-apples picture in terms of assessment.
Great, thank you. So with summative and formative assessments, do these tools only have summative assessments at year-end or do they have them like at trimester marks?
Yeah. So, so I can speak to the SAS and I'm sure Becca can speak to the others. The SAS has what are called modular and benchmark assessments, and those can happen as formative assessments throughout the course of the year. And of course, the real deal SAS, the one that they're actually, they're now designing it for the spring to be perfectly remote capable. Will, that, that is the one summative assessment that they offer for the school year.
So it's, it's summative at the end of the year. So you can't do any summative kind of mid-year to see if they're where they need to be. They're all formative until the end of the year.
Yeah, they're all like half-hour diagnostic kind of.
Assess the class, see where you need to tweak, see who, who individual students you need to lift up. Got it. I love the fact that you did these things. One of the observations I make is that this is a little bit in a vacuum in that we're looking at the sixth, seventh and eighth graders within sixth, seventh and eighth grade, not looking at where they might have been fifth graders going into sixth grade. And did they increase? Did we have more people at the advanced now or less, right? So we're looking at it within a year, not over time, within the same grade. And we're also not looking year over year, is this better than, worse than, or the same as sixth graders did last, two years ago before remote learning. So we're looking at it, but we're looking at it in isolation. So you don't really know what the story is. You only know what this data set shows you, not what the trend is over time. And are we meeting the kids' needs in, in an exceptional way, in a, we're doing the best we can way, which is reasonable, or we're slipping. And this data doesn't explain any of that to me because I don't know what it is over time.
Well, and it's, you know, just as a cautionary note too, it's one data point. And I think that it's important to note that our teachers give formative assessments on a regular basis. And in some cases, it's like a unit test as part of the math curriculum. In some cases, it's a, you know, it's a project-based assessment where there's a rubric and the teachers are, are really paying attention to how kids are doing in real time and adjusting their instruction in real time. This is, this was an attempt on our part to, you know, to just check in, to start this process. And as Becca said, and as Dave said, this is something that may be a goal of ours long-term to have more consistent data over time that allows us to make the comparisons that you're, that you're talking about. And, and we just didn't have, we don't have the, the past data to compare to at this point. And, and, and each data point is a snapshot in time. And so I, you know, but this, this was our attempt to share with you that, you know, we're, we, we felt pretty good about, about these results. We felt that, you know, kids were pretty much where we would expect them to be and the teachers are feeling that as well.
Yeah, 100%. And this is not a, a question about teachers, right? So I want to take that off the table. We, my recollection is I've seen similar presentations in the past. So, and, and I know we've had STAR and SAS and DIBELS even in the past as well. And my understanding is that we have done formative assessments to see how we can tweak our, our teaching over time in the past. So seeing that pattern of past and present, seeing that progression from the fifth graders or the fourth graders a couple of years ago, what percentage were in which bucket? When they were fifth graders, what percentage were in which bucket, sixth graders, et cetera. It's, it's interesting and important data, I believe. The other thing is, and this has been something that my five years on the board I've seen is that our math consistently lags behind our language arts. And I know we're working on it, but this again shows it this year. And I know it's been a concern of, of parents in the, in the past. So while, while I'm, I'm glad we're keeping track of it, it certainly seems like it should be an area of focus. The other thing is that if I'm not mistaken, SAS and STAR have not only our, our data, but we can compare how we're doing against other districts or the state, and that would be interesting as well. Because that, you know, if we're, if we're above, we should be able to say, hey, we're above and look what a great job we're doing for our students and we should celebrate that.
So I get a couple of things I can, I can add to that just to, to answer some of, of your thoughts around that. So with, with the math, I think I, I would, I wouldn't say that our data, although I certainly in the past, because I've done two presentations for you guys with our SAS data. So I, I know the reference that you're speaking to about how our ELA scores are generally higher than our math scores. With the presentation that we did today, I, I don't think it, it says that. And I feel like our, because these are not the, the, the use and the purpose of these assessments and the results that we get were really to inform instruction. And so I don't think it gives us an ability to say very much where our students are at compared to where they were last year, certainly. Because we don't have that data point, they didn't take the SAS in the spring. As, as well as to other, comparing to other students, other schools, other, other states. But the STAR, that's one that our student eighth graders took, which they did incredibly well with, is actually a nationally-normed exam. So they were compared with students who took the same assessment. During that same, I think it's a two-week time period. And they did incredibly well. The fact that 85% of them were proficient or better is, is extraordinary, truly. I, I have done, I've been at many schools using STAR and that's the best I've seen. And then our, the, the other two assessments for sixth and seventh grade, they really highlighted where the disruption of learning happened in the spring and what we have covered and what we haven't covered this year so far. And so kind of expected pre-learning that we might need to, to front end as we go into it. So I don't, I guess I would argue that I didn't feel like this, this math data showed that our students weren't doing very well with, or doing as well with the math. It's different.
Didn't it show that 30% were proficient or, or above? But you're saying it's because we haven't hit that, we haven't taught to that yet. So it's just informing us on what we need to teach.
Well, so for sixth grade, yes. And for the sixth graders, because they took, they took the one that they should take next year, just to be. So the sixth grade students took the sixth grade interim assessment, which, which makes sense when you, when the students go to press the button and pick the test. That makes sense. But in fact, the directions from the DOE, the intent of it is that they would be taking the fifth grade one because they should be tested on, they should be assessed on the fifth grade standard that they learned last year, not the ones that are coming down the road that they haven't taken yet. So.
In, in, in September, right? When they first come back, not, not in.
In the fall. It's not necessarily like right when you hit the door running because it's best not to assess students as soon as they walk in the door. You need to kind of get them back into the groove and establish classroom routines and all the other important things that happen at the beginning of the school year. But in the fall, it's intended to be our first trimester tool. But the, the seventh grade one, it, it did show that our students weren't performing as high as we would expect them to. But the area of growth that it showed we most needed was what we expected to see because it was what the students were studying when the disruption of learning happened. They'd just gotten into that and they haven't gotten to it yet this year. That unit's supposed to start towards the end of February, beginning of March. So I, I don't think it's a, it's, it's a, it's a reflection on how our students are doing. It's more a reflection on what we need to teach them moving forward.
Yeah. So, and just to be clear, I think it's awesome that you guys, the administration and the teachers are leveraging these resources to understand what's going on, to take these snapshots, single points a day, to Susan, to your point. I think it's wonderful. Not every school does. Not every school has the resources to do it. My line of questioning has to do with, okay, now that you have the data, what do you do with it? And how is it relative to past data, right? It to really inform instruction. And that's, that's the key. This, these, these assessments in my mind should never be a gotcha. It should be a, hey, it's learning, it's a data point, it's going to inform what we need to do. And now let's get better year over year, you know, because you're not going to move the needle all at once either.
Just to follow up, in terms of longitudinal data that we're looking for, and I'm, I'm looking for it too, believe me. We're going to see that in the spring. We're going to be able to, I mean, we do have that gap year where we didn't test last spring. But we are going to, we are going to be able to see not only year-to-year progression, but also, like you said, relative to the state. Just a quick point that I'd on, add on to Becca's comments is it's funny with the RLA students, right? You've got this bunch of students that are in Remote Learning Academy. We're using a different diagnostic, the iXL. But you can pull out the data, they call it strands. It's probably very similar to the STAR assessment. But my guess is we're going to see different valleys in terms of skills just because of order of operations of curriculum. And we're seeing that, you know, maybe the RLA is covering X, Y and Z trimester one and Northampton's not covering it until trimester two. So, so some of those things that we have to just kind of reconcile. But I think, I think spring will give us a good diagnostic and will give us a little bit more of a breadth of a whole list of picture of where kids are.
Thank you for that. Any additional questions or comments? All right, we're at the financial part, Matt.
Thank you. So we, we have attached the year-to-date expenditure and revenue report on Board Docs. And I, I just want to, I'll briefly summarize. I, I know this may not be the, what everyone wants to focus on at the moment. But we, we are, you know, I, I do want to point out on page one, you'll see under regular education, salary substitutes. We are over budget by $34,000. This is a reflection of the long-term substitute teachers that we hired for RLA. So that, that's why that account is, is higher as, as Susan mentioned earlier, we're not, we have very, we're, we're not getting substitutes at the elementary level currently. So you'll, we'll, you'll continue to see that, assuming that we continue with RLA, that account can continue to go into the deficit. You know, as I've mentioned before, special education is over budget, but we do have some areas where we're, we are saving, we are recognizing savings. That includes salaries for certified staff as far as teacher, teachers. Our benefits accounts are under budget. You will see in buildings that we are over budget. Again, this, I've mentioned this before, but that's, it's primarily due to COVID-related costs as far as, you know, disinfectants, PPE, tents, et cetera. Now, now what, where we are seeing some change is on the revenue side. So I will know if you look at the revenue reports, we, it does reflect some revenue from, from the state. So that's, I, I referenced the supplemental public school response fund that we, that we received through the state for $200 per student. That, that is reflected at $65,800. That was obviously unanticipated. We also received a refund through Health Trust, our, our health insurance provider. Because, because over the last, you know, nine months, obviously our, our employees and employees within our pool have not been going to the doctor as frequently as in the past. They have not been having as many elective surgeries, those type of things. So we, we received a pretty significant discount or refund rather from Health Trust, approximately $40,000. You'll see in this, in this account, it shows $50,000, but you have to account for approximately 80% goes to the employer and 20% goes to the employee. So that 20% or whatever the percentage is, because all of our accounts, all of our plans are slightly different, will be refunded to the employees. Additionally, we did receive a REAP grant. So that's, you know, $16,500. That's unanticipated revenue. So we do have some, you know, in excess of $100,000 in, in unexpected revenue, which does help that bottom line as we look to go end the school year. And where we, where we can invest in funds. Now, I will also mention on the revenue side, as you all, I'm sure noted, there was a federal stimulus package that just passed and that did include school funding. They've structured it the same as, in the, in the same fashion as the first CARES-ESR grant fund. So that is based on Title I A funding. So that first round of funding, Northampton received approximately, I want to say $56,000. So this round of funding is actually higher. We're estimating approximately four times that amount.
We got $14,000 the first time.
I'm sorry, I extrapolated to 56,000 was the four times.
Yeah.
I was getting, I'm sorry for getting people excited there for a second. We had some schools, we have some schools that are, it's going to be significant, hundreds of thousands of dollars. But Northampton has a fairly low title, Title I allocation. So, but that's real money that we, we can utilize. And we do have a, a longer timeframe, time horizon to utilize that through, through September. Thank you, Susan, for catching that. That's impressive.
Well, I think, I think we're up for about $56,000 now and we had 14 before.
Yeah, exactly. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that, I actually know one, one other mention. You know, this is something, as far as federal grants, we are actively monitoring. It looks like, I mean, they're coming from Congress now that, now that they've determined the Senate race. They are, they're already, I'm hearing talks about another stimulus package. So that there could be some additional funding that's coming down the path. Obviously, that's to be determined. But we will keep you updated as we, as we hear more about that. Happy to answer any questions in regard to either of these reports?
I just a quick comment, Matt. And this, this may be relevant, it may not. I know some insurance companies are either offering refunds, refunds on their property and liability. Um, I know some insurance companies are either offering, uh, refunds, refunds on their property and liability, specifically liability coverage, just because there are less students in school. May not be as relevant for Northampton, but it might be for the SAU. Uh, other companies are offering a credit towards next year's premium because the exposure is lower. Um, but you may need to have the conversation with your broker or carrier in order to get them to move on that. They may not do it on their own.
You're, you're absolutely right, Tom. Um, so actually I, I, I didn't mention it because it's, it's smaller money. Um, but we, we actually did, um, receive, we've actually already received a, a check for it. I, I can't say the exact amount, but it's a few thousand dollars.
Yep.
Um, for, for property and liability, um, as well as, uh, like off the top of my head, I, I, uh, one of our other insurance carriers, we, we received a credit or a, a refund for as well. Um, so it was, it was, it was health, dental liability, um, and one other. Um, I, I don't think it was unemployment. So, um, I'll, I'll, I'll let you know at the next board meeting.
No need, no need. I just, glad you got it. Get your gun.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt? No. All right. Thank you again. All right, next onto personnel. It says update on staffing. This does not say non-public after this one. Is this a public conversation or should this be in non-public as well as our next topic?
I believe this item was, um, just informational about, um, open positions. Is that right?
Okay.
You're muted.
Sorry. Um, we're in the process of, um, of attempting to fill two open EA positions. And then there is a resignation that, um, came after our planning that I think goes to non-public first.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. So is the update on staffing, is that it? We've got two open, uh, EA positions. Those have been posted for a few weeks now, correct?
Uh, yes, one of them has been posted for a few weeks. We have an active, one active candidate. I think, I think we have one of them, um, potentially filled and then the other one we're, we'll still be looking, so.
All right. Thank you for the update. Uh, next we have resolut, uh, resignation. We will, um, discuss that in non-public. Um, and our next meeting dates, uh, next big meeting day, we have a joint board meeting Tuesday, January 26th. And our next, oh, we have our deliberative session coming up Tuesday, February 2nd. Always a fun one. And then our next regular board meeting is Thursday, February 2nd.
I think we're going to be shaped for the deliberative session. Matt has done a fantastic job.
He has, he have, I mean, he has.
I'm surprised. Um, actually, one, one note on the deliberative. Um, I, I just want to give, um, you a heads up that, uh, we, we did, um, speak with legal counsel about how to hold the, the deliberative session. Um, there, there is a, a law that was put in place that allows for a remote option. However, after speaking with, with Attorney Casassa, um, he, he felt, and I agree, that it really was not feasible. We had, we would have to physically notify or notice every single individual within the town. And that's not even household, that's at each voting individual, as well as have two remote sessions and then drive through, um, voting because peo, people need to be able to vote on it. Um, it, it's, it really would, would not make sense to, uh, or, or really would be almost impossible to, to conduct, uh, we, we felt. Um, so what, what we are, we, we are planning on having the in-person deliberative session. Um, however, he did advise that we keep it short and sweet, um, for public health concerns. Um, so we, we do intend to, um, in, instead of the typical PowerPoint that we, we present, um, we'll, we'll go through that at the public hearing, um, do the full PowerPoint at the public hearing and we'll have it posted, we'll have it, you know, you know, um, put it on Twitter, Facebook, everywhere, disseminated that way. Um, we'll just do a summary of the, of the budget at the deliberative session and then read the warrant article, votes, provide the community the opportunity to make any changes as they see fit. And then try to close it out really quickly. Um, he, 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 he just felt that it was important that it's, um, that we, we keep it short. So.
Okay. So we will set, where will this be then? Will we, um, will we utilize the town hall or, I mean, the school for this?
Yeah, so it will be at the school and, and, and also you, um, I, I'm not sure if you're aware, but the town will be holding their deliberative session in the gym at the school as well. Um, and we are, we are looking, uh, actually Susan and I, I think I have a FaceTime tomorrow to, uh, to look at the space to see whether the cafeteria or the gym works better. Because as you know, the gym, the cafeteria is full of furniture. Um, and we, so we're just trying to figure that out, but it'll be either in the gymnasium or the cafeteria. So.
So Greg, I'd like to make a motion to enter non-public session under RSA 91A32A.
Second.
I'll second.
So David, that's a non-public meeting, so we'll exit this meeting.
Yeah, rather than, um, bringing eight people in and putting them on hold, let's just jump to the other meeting. That's my recommendation. I'll go start it up.
Thank you, David.
I'm going to mark this unanimous.
Is it in, is it in an email, Dave?
In the email, so exit this meeting.
Okay.
Greg, I'd like a motion to come out of non-public.
Give me one second. Let me get over here. All right, Tom.
I think, I think Becca is, um, stuck in the other part.
Yep, one moment. Thank you.
I'll second.
Cindy Burke?
Yes.
Greg Duffy?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
And Thomas Von Jess?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Deb. We have a resignation on the table. Did we hear a motion?
Greg, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Brooklyn Summers as BCBA effective 2/19/21, unless the position is filled prior to that date.
I'll second.
Nermina, second. Okay.
Any, uh, additional discussion? Nope. Okay.
Cindy Burke?
Yes.
Greg Duffy?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
And Thomas Von Jess?
Yes.
Vote taken.
All right. Thank you, Deb. I believe we are finished.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, second.
Hold on one second. So it's 8:57 PM. And who made the motion?
I made the motion and Nermina made the second.
Thank you. And I'm going to assume it's a mark unanimous.
I think so.
There we go. Vote taken.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you.